Hey, let's call the, uh, city council meeting of January ninth to order. We'll start off with a roll call to my left. You want to state your name and your position?
Brian Shuan, city council member.
Troy Tabor, council member.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Ben Lawrence, council, Ben Mayor, excuse me.
We're rolling now.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Warington, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Chad Russell, fire chief.
Jennifer McCosland, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangas, director of public works.
Susan Renner, city clerk.
Mark Deiter, city administrator.
Okay, um, new order of business, although it's, I think it's officially been done, we do have two new members of the city council with us tonight, duly elected, and I would like to take an opportunity to swear them in formally, I should say. Um, if you will, Mike, why don't you, we'll go with you first, why don't you join me down here?
It's not too late.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stichman.
I'm Mike Warington.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution of the state of Kansas?
Constitution of the state of Kansas.
And ordinances of the city of Andover?
Ordinances of the city of Andover.
And basically discharge the duties of, as, and by being the stars of duties of, as a city council member?
As a city council member.
Of the city of Andover?
Of the city of Andover.
So, how many got it?
How we got it?
Welcome. Thank you. I'm coming, I'm coming, I'm coming. See, the knee surgery is doing well?
Yes.
Kind of?
It's getting there.
All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi?
Hi, Brian Shuan.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America?
Do solemnly swear that...
Support.
Support the Constitution, sorry. Sorry.
Do solemnly swear that I will support?
I'll support the...
The Constitution of the United States of America?
Constitution.
The Constitution of the state of Kansas?
Constitution of the state of Kansas.
Ordinances of the city?
Ordinances of the city.
And basically discharge the duties?
Uh...
Basically discharge the duties?
Basically discharge duties.
Of, as a city council member?
As a city council member.
Of the city of Andover?
Of the city of Andover.
So, how we got it? So, how we got it? Perfect. Good job. All right. Item number four, uh, it's invocation, I believe we have Pastor James Gillespie from Andover Baptist, thank you for being here.
Let's bow in prayer. Dear my father, we come to you in thankfulness for this year that has passed and the blessing given to Andover, her residents, and those in her government, and those who work in her midst. We pray that this year, Lord, in this new year of 2018, that you will bless her, protect her, may you bless her residents, her government, and those who work in her midst. May you also bless the business and discussion that goes on tonight. May your wisdom guide the decisions made tonight, and ultimately, may you be glorified in the city of Andover. We ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Will you stand with us for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number six, uh, with the new body, new members up here, following each election, we, um, deliberate amongst ourselves for the council president petition, position, excuse me, outgoing member, Chris Estes, last filled that position. I will tell you that the council president is nominated by the council and approved by the council. If there's multiple nominations, uh, we can consider them each, um, so if you have somebody to nominate, you would want to do so at this time, council.
Mr. Mayor?
Troy.
I'd like to nominate Clark for the position to president of the council.
Is there a second to that nomination?
A second.
All right. Uh, before we, uh, deliberate any further, are there any additional nominations? All right. We have a nomination by Troy and a second by Greg to nominate, uh, council member Nelson to the role of council president. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The good news is you don't have to move.
I was going to go to the back of the room.
I will, uh, so you know, I will have, uh, a new seating chart next week. Traditionally, the council president does sit on the right of me, and I probably will move you just to be cantankerous, uh, but you'll have a new seating arrangement next week, so look for that when you arrive in the building. Move on to item number seven, which is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Yes, ma'am. If you could stand up, go to the podium, give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kristen Galan. I'm a resident of Andover. I live in the Green Valley District, and it's 215 South Fairway Circle. And I'm here to address the breed-specific legislation laws. I know that that was brought up, uh, at the last meeting, um, that it was, um, initially added on the day of the 26th in the morning prior to the meeting. I was unfortunately unable to attend that meeting, um, however, I feel strongly that instead of a specific legislation law against a specific breed, which is very discriminatory, we could adopt breed-neutral legislation, which focuses on dangerous dog laws, and more importantly, focuses on dog ownership and the responsibility of the owner, rather than what a specific animal looks like, as it's a very subjective thing. And I know in the bylaws, it states American Stafford, American Terrier, all these things, but those are still subjective, um, very difficult to prove visually. Experts and veterinarians alone can't prove a specific, to say that these are pit bulls, DNA tests often can't, and most dogs are mixed breed dogs. I also volunteer for the Humane Society, I have for about seven years now, and most of the dogs there are quote-unquote pit bull breed types. Um, the Kansas Humane Society no longer lists breed on their website or for adoptions because they, along with the Humane Society of the United States, ASPCA, American Veterinary Association, all disagree with breed-specific legislation. So I think to change it to breed-neutral legislation, dangerous dogs, responsible dog ownership, enforcing leash laws, rather than trying to go out and basically slap good owners with good dogs on the wrist and take away those family pets.
Okay. Anybody have anything to say? Well, I will say something. Um, you know, Andover's had a ban on pit bulls for a considerable amount of time. The governing body of the city of Andover, uh, has debated the merits of exactly what you're saying numerous times, uh, probably half a dozen in the last six months, and, uh, we came up with a revised ordinance that actually strengthens, uh, what we felt was an inferior ordinance, and that governing body, including myself, um, has concurred that pit bulls should be banned, and that's the way it was passed, and that's the way it is.
Is there any potential for a citywide vote of the residents?
You know, uh, that's possible. I can tell you, um, citywide votes or special elections are very expensive. Do we have any idea what that would cost? Last estimate I heard was twelve, fifteen thousand probably.
All right, depending on how we do it, I think our last one to have, the in-person one, that was about five thousand bucks, and then if you did a mail ballot, I think it would be higher than that.
So if we had a special, uh, when's the next election? That's two years away, isn't it?
November 2018, or, or probably August 2018, actually, for the primary.
Okay. We'll certainly take that under advisement, that, you know, it's up, it's up to the council members here, if, if they choose to add a question to the ballot.
As far as...
To remind the council, the city attorney could certainly elaborate on this, is that that would be a non-binding vote.
Sure.
You can't, the council has to take action to change the law. It's not just, there are some things, yes, we go to vote on, but that specifically, we don't have initiative or referendum. You could describe this more.
Actually, you couldn't call an election if you wanted to.
Right.
As a city council, because the state doesn't, uh, provide for non-binding elections. It's not how the municipality governs itself. Uh, the only way an election would be called, called on this issue would be by referendum ordinance, should have to be initiated by the people, and would be initiated by petition, and that would be the only way an election would ever be called on this issue unless the, e- even if the city council wanted to, the, the state empowers you to make these decisions and expects you to make them. Um, actually, we've had this conversation with former councils before, that, um, it's not always, it's, it's frequently not an easy job, but you all have to make the decision. So, uh, we could not, we could not force an election on this as a city council because the state doesn't recognize non-binding elections. You could, you could take a poll, you could put it on a utility bill, but you can't actually, uh, put a non-binding election on the, on the ballot.
I think, uh, this is my opinion, I think that I've done my very best to take a poll, and I think the majority of the residents of Andover would uphold this ban. I understand that there are people who don't like it.
Right. And I mean, the majority of people I know in the city of Andover would oppose breed-specific legislation.
I would encourage you to tell those people to show up at a city council meeting and do exactly what you're doing, and...
Absolutely.
Give us their opinion.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. All right, we're still in the public forum, is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes, sir? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Javier, oh, my lordy. Uh, my name is Javier Figueroa, and, uh, so, I am the spouse of Kristen Galan, so we have the same address, 215 South Fairway Circle, Andover, Kansas, 67002. Um, I wasn't actually planning to speak, but I did, um, I respect what Ben said, and Ben, uh, said something specific about polling people about what they feel about pit bulls and that prejudice, and I just want you to know that I had that prejudice, I certainly felt that way, I was afraid of Dobermans, and I was afraid of Rottweilers and pit bulls, and, um, it, even though I, it wasn't a prejudice, uh, like, uh, what people would say against, like, black people or, or something like that, I realized that it was something that had been instilled in me, a prejudice towards, uh, pit bulls, but as I have been learning more and I have met, um, fostered animals that need help, I have really come to the conclusion, and of course, this is just my opinion, that it, um, has to do with how you treat a dog and how it is. So if we treat a dog well, um, a pit bull can be an excellent pet, a wonderful pet, and if you mistreat, um, or hurt other animals, they certainly could be just as dangerous as any other breed. So I just wanted to say that I hear what Ben said, and I respect, um, I believe that he probably did go and get, um, get opinions from the city, um, and I certainly would have been that person that felt exactly the same way because of the, these prejudices that I didn't really know that I had. Um, so, um, that's pretty much all I want to say, and I feel like, um, I agree with what people are saying, and I think maybe there would be a way that we could make people more knowledgeable, that there is information out there showing that, um, that pit bulls just like, are just like any other breed of dog, and they can be good pets and not dangerous, and then we could adopt a more, um, get rid of a breed-specific legislation, and then just focus on the other things. So, thank you.
May, may I say something in response to that?
Absolutely, sir.
I believe that all dogs can be dangerous, okay? If they're treated bad, but you, I, I think the point that's being missed here is that the difference between a bite of a German Shepherd or a Doberman even is vastly different than the bite of a pit bull. It causes a different type of damage, a more severe type of damage. So I, I get what you're saying, and you, you are correct when you say all dogs can be dangerous, you're absolutely correct, but having a Labrador Retriever bite you on the leg and run away is a lot different than a pit bull biting on your leg and holding on and thrashing and taking all of your calf muscle away. It's totally different, and pit bulls have that capacity, and that was a factor into this ordinance, I mean, why this ordinance was even created 14 years ago. So, I mean, I get what you're saying, and, and breed-specific, um, has been challenged before, and, and municipalities, um, have come out on top because there is an inherent danger there with a bite from an animal of that nature, you know, of that type.
If, if I could rebut, all I could say is I'm not knowledgeable, um, when it comes to that, but I certainly respect your opinion, and I respect what you're saying, and I, I think I'm going to take it upon myself to try to see if there is some data actually out there, or if there are some, um, actual papers or something that have tested something like this, because I think...
There is.
That would be very interesting to...
A lot of data.
Yeah.
And we reviewed a lot of data. Uh, you know, Andover's not alone, there's over eighty cities in the state of Kansas that have the same ordinance as we, um, there's hundreds, I, I don't even, I can't even tell you how much is, you know, how many bans in the United States, US military bans, I mean, there's a, there's a reason for it.
I, I understand what you're saying, and I certainly, if there is a legitimate reason, but I mean, I came to Andover because I feel like we could definitely lead in many ways. So if there is a better way, and if we choose Andover to be the place that leads that, that would be great. So, um, I will try to look for that, and, uh, I may reach out to some of the council members, because if you have pulled that information, there's no reason for me, uh, to, um, to look up a lot of that and see, see if I can...
We can, we could provide for you a lot of the material that we read.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we're still in the public forums, is there anyone here that'd like to speak to the council? There being none, we'll move on to item number eight, which is the acceptance of the agenda. I don't see any additional agenda items, is that correct?
Believe that's correct, yes, and...
Okay.
Yeah.
So I would need to go ahead...
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Greg, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. Items, items nine point one through nine point eight.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda items nine point one through nine point eight as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Greg, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten, we have before you a resolution. Would you like to explain?
Mr. Mayor, council members, what you have on your agenda tonight is a inducement resolution or indication of intent to issue not to exceed 1.5 million dollars of industrial revenue bonds for the benefit of Founder's Real Estate LLC, which of course is the entity that owns Kansas Medical Center located in Andover. The proposed bonds would be used to make construction improvements and equipment improvements to the intermediate unit at the hospital. The proposed breakdown is that roughly 870,000 dollars worth of the bonds would be for improvements in construction, and 450,000 dollars worth of the bonds would be for new equipment. I'm going to take just a minute, because we have some new council members, to explain how IRBs work and where we are in the process, and I apologize to all you old hands who've been through this several times. The way industrial revenue bonds work is the city issues its bonds to pay for an improvement, and then that improvement is leased to the industry over a period of time, and the rent for that lease magically equals the principal and interest on the bonds that are due. The bond purchaser, which proposed in this case would be the Bank of Oklahoma, knows and understands that the law doesn't obligate the city to levy taxes or pay for these bonds, and the contracts specifically provide that the general obligation tax pledge of the city is not pledged to pay these bonds under any circumstances. In other words, if during the period of these bonds, the tenant, Kansas Medical Center, would not pay the lease payment necessary to pay the bonds, the city would legally not be obligated to pay it. There would be a default on the bonds, and it would be a default of the tenant, not a default of the city, and I wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Also wanted you to understand why they're asking for this. There are a number of benefits that come through industrial revenue bond financing that cannot be obtained through mortgage financing. The first and principally important one to the Kansas Medical Center on this particular proposal is that because the city is technically buying those things and leasing them to the tenant, the city isn't obligated to pay sales tax on the acquisition. This includes the state and local sales tax, it's a significant reduction in the cost of buying the equipment, the medical equipment that's located at the hospital, uh, help me out, Mark, in, in Andover, the percentage tax would be...
Eight point five.
Eight point five percent less cost to acquire the medical equipment because sales tax would not have to be paid on it because it's purchased by the city. In addition, the law provides that during the period of that lease and during the period of the bonds, if the city wants to, the city can abate the property taxes on those facilities for up to ten years at a hundred percent of their value. The Kansas Medical Center is and will be asking for a hundred percent tax abatement for ten years, but that leads me to the important part about tonight. That's not what we're doing tonight. Issuing bonds is a three-step process. The first step is, would you ever consider issuing bonds for this kind of improvement? Is it an improvement you want in the city? Is it desirable to you, and do you intend to issue the bonds? That is the decision you are making tonight by adopting the inducement resolution. In a few weeks, assuming, or if this resolution is adopted, then we will come back and consider a tax abatement resolution. When we consider the tax abatement resolution, we'll notify the county, and we'll notify the school district, and we'll notify the community college, and we'll publish notice in the newspaper, and there will be a public hearing on support or not support for giving tax abatement for this particular project, after which you will discuss and make a decision on the tax abatement. Then finally, some period after that, which we're estimating to be in April or May, the bonds would be issued. The proposed Bank of Oklahoma would buy all the bonds, and the money will be deposited into a project fund that will be used to construct the project, so that will be the third thing you will be considering. Tonight, we're way back at step one. We're considering whether or not you would intend to issue bonds for this project. I will tell you in anticipation that the applicant has shared that over the next four years, they have anticipated 13.5 million dollars' worth of improvements at the hospital, and that this would just be what we are referring to as the first phase of construction they're, they're planning at the hospital, uh, but they are in a position where they would like to begin to purchase some of that equipment, and the inducement resolution is an essential element for them to apply for that contingent sales tax exemption certificate that you get from the state, so, so without tonight's inducement resolution, they could not begin to begin acquiring the equipment. That's really all I had to say. Again, uh, for those of you who've done it before, I'm hoping there's nothing new there, and for those of you who are new, I would be delighted to answer any questions as the city attorney and bond counsel. Steve Hadley, the chief financial officer of the hospital, is here as well, if you have any questions about the project, he'd be delighted to answer those. The Industrial Revenue Bond Committee, which is composed of the city administrator, the mayor, and council member Nelson, met earlier this week, and I think they're recommending approval, but I'll let the mayor speak to that, and I stand for any questions you have.
Any questions? J.T. is correct, uh, we did, uh, meet earlier this week, discussed the merits of the project. I believe the hospital is planning on some very exciting equipment purchases, some cutting-edge stuff, um, and, uh, you know, way back in the day, when they founded that hospital in Andover, um, they did not ask for, uh, property tax abatements, and currently, there are none. And to be clear, uh, if we talk about tax abatements further down the line, as our, the city attorney opines, that would only apply to any, to the, to the new construction or any raise in valuation? Am I, am I correct on that?
Yeah, here... Here, we're not constructing a brand-new standalone facility, so it will not be easy for the county appraiser to say, okay, that's not on the tax rolls for ten years. We're talking about a renovation in large part of an existing facility. So when the appraiser looks at that, they have to say, well, what's, what's abated and what's not, because to be very clear, you're not abating the existing hospital or any improvements that are currently there. But of course, when you, when you jazz it up, it, it should be worth more, and, uh, the, the question is how much more? The question is not whether they'll be taxed on the addition or not, it won't be, the additional value won't be taxed, it probably won't be worth the seven or eight hundred thousand dollars they're spending here, because it's not a brand-new building, and so, uh, as you're all aware, when you make improvements to an existing facility, uh, you usually don't get a dollar-for-dollar value increase, uh, unless you're doing your kitchen, kitchens are very important, but besides that, you don't get a dollar-for-dollar value increase. So, yes, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, the, uh, fact is that we'll, we'll be abating less on the construction than the 870,000 they're forecasting, and no one will really know that number, it, it will be as if you're not constructing anything new, and the value will basically stay the same, is usually how the appraiser treats it.
Just wanted to stress the point that we're not abating the property taxes of the hospital.
Very important, and I think to your point, and this is very important too, when we do the tax abatement analysis, it assumes they're constructing something new worth 870,000 dollars. So, I'm glad you brought it up, because when we show the amount of taxes that will be abated, it will assume you're abating the full tax value of what they're spending. I just, I just, no one believes that to be correct, but that's how the model works. So when we get there, I think it's very appropriate that you brought it up, because here, we're, we're improving an existing facility, we're not acquiring something, we're not acquiring something standalone or new.
Right. Council have any other questions, or C.R., you were there, do you have a comment?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I simply want to confirm to the council members that I did participate in the conference, and I was instrumental in absolutely nothing. But, uh, I'm very supportive of the, uh, of the proposition. And in that connection, uh, I hereby move to approve the resolution indicating the intent of the governing body, the city of Andover, Kansas, to issue certain industrial revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 1,500,000 dollars for the purpose of purchasing, acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping renovations and additions to an existing acute care hospital, and paying a portion of the costs of issuance thereof.
I second.
Motion by C.R., second by Greg, to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, move on to item number 11. All right, move on to item number eleven.
Mr. Mayor, as you recall, we had a citizen come to us about the paving of Lafayette and Herman Streets and a few of the other streets in that area. The petition they took around the neighborhood was not sufficient to compel the city council to go forth with this project, so we've decided to take another route whereby the council would hold a public hearing and receive public input on the advisability of this project. We're proposing that public hearing be on February thirteenth to have the discussion. At that time, staff will have notified through courtesy to property owners in the area that we're going to be discussing this, give them a relative idea of what the cost will be per property, and then they'll be able to come in and comment to the council, and the council can choose to go forth at that point or not. I'd let the city attorney make any further comments on that, if he has anything to add.
He would add one thing, because it's unique here. Mark is precisely correct that there are two ways to do a special assessment project. One is, a majority of the owners come in and petition for you to do it. You don't have to, but the city decides at once to issue bonds and do that, and special assess back the costs. The other way is to call a public hearing on the matter, let people speak, and then have the council decide. He's right, we're in the second way. What's unique here is the anticipation of this resolution and throughout the process has been that the city at large would pay a substantial portion of the improvement. I think it's near fifty percent, as I recall. That is somewhat unique for public hearing purposes. We've accommodated it in here, and I want you to know that that's how the notices will explain it. The proposal is that the only roughly half of the actual costs will be assessed back to the property owners on a program the city has supported for paving its streets. So I think that's very unique, and I think it's an important component of what the hearing will be on.
We have, the numbers you're planning on sharing with the residents are based on preliminary engineering?
We don't have a full-blown set of plans or anything, and we think we've estimated high at this point, suggesting it'll be a nine hundred thousand dollar project. Right now, we're suggesting an appraisal method that, well, a assessment method that's based on appraisal, so obviously higher-value properties will wind up paying more for the project, according to our suggestion, although I assume that can be discussed at the public hearing, how in fact we do the assessment. Is that correct?
Appraisal value, is that one of the legal mechanisms?
It's not used very much, but yes.
Really?
Yes.
I gathered. Okay. Well, we've been beaten down this path a number of times. We still realize that we have a lot of unpaved streets within the city limits of Andover, and this is step one. We've had some residents actually come forward on this case and want their street paved. But it'll be a knockdown, probably. We'll see who shows up and who wants it and who's against it, and see where it goes. I just want the availability and the knowledge to be left with those who don't want it, of their rights to petition to not have it, if we get to that point.
Sure.
So I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution setting public hearing for February thirteenth...
A second.
Twenty eighteen at seven PM to consider the advisability of making paving improvements in the city of Lafayette and in the area of Lafayette and Herman Streets in the east of Andover Road.
I second.
All right, motion by Greg, second by Brian, to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we are going to have a Public Building Commission meeting. And CR, as new council president, you will be the, gosh, what is your official title?
President.
President. President, el presidente of Public Building Commission. So at this time, I'd like somebody to make a motion to recess the Andover City Council meeting and convene the Public Building Commission.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion by Troy, second by Greg, to recess the Andover City Council meeting and convene the Public Building Commission. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I call the meeting of Tuesday, January nine, two thousand and eighteen, of the Public Building Commission to order. First item would be the roll call, and I would, we would call our name and state a commissioner, and move forward, starting at my left here.
Brian Shuan, Commissioner.
Troy Taber, Commissioner.
Clark CR Nelson, President.
Ben Lawrence, Public Building Commissioner.
Greg Schneider, Commissioner.
Mike Warrington, Commissioner.
So far, so good, huh? The next item has to do with the minutes of the last meeting. Do I have a motion for approval of the same?
So moved.
We have a motion by Troy.
Second.
We have a second. By Greg, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four is the Capitol Federal Amphitheater Digital Board Purchase, and do we have a presentation?
Yes, with you, President, thank you. I will back up just a second, because I know we have a few new commissioners. Back when we did the naming of the Capitol Federal Amphitheater in the rights and agreement, there was a stipulation in there that we would purchase two digital boards to be located at the amphitheater with Capitol Federal participating in a cost of fifty percent up to fifty thousand dollars in total cost. That being said, we proceeded to try to find the best purchase for our dollars. We brought in three vendors to give us proposals, and we had two of them that gave us onsite or at their facility demonstrations of their systems. When we got the dollar numbers in on the proposals, Next LED was about fifty-eight thousand less than the next lowest proposal from Luminous Sign. Both those companies had great quality signs, we felt like. However, we kind of felt like both of them were very comparable in the LED signs themselves. However, I personally felt, and I think the rest of the staff would agree, that Next LED had a little better backend system as far as how we could, what we could demonstrate on it, and how we could utilize the technology during events and so forth. That being said, Jennifer and Les and I all came to the conclusion pretty quickly that we wanted to bring to you for your consideration, the Next LED proposal for the ten SMDs LED signs. They are about nine point four by thirteen point five in size, so they're just under ten feet high, just under fourteen feet wide. And each one, one will be placed on each side of the main roof, underneath the two lower roofs, and it will be suspended from the truss that's on the lower roof that is holding up the roof support beams and against the poles on the outer edge. Excuse me. The total cost for this, under XLD's proposal, would be one hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents. As I stated earlier, Capitol Federal will be participating in fifty thousand of that, and per our naming rights agreement, we would have seventy-five thousand coming any time, if not already here. So those two together come to a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so it's enough to cover the cost of this just out of that alone. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than willing to try to answer them.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a question. Would this just be the cost of the two screens, or is the software included, or is there a yearly fee on that?
So the software, excuse me, go ahead.
No, I'm saying, and mounting hardware and that kind of, I mean, what all is included in this really?
So Next LED's proposal came with a rack system, all the, has a switcher included with it, has software included with it, has a lot of stuff included with it. It's the backend operation part that was pretty important to me. And then the Luminous just came with the Dell PC and some software, so those are another kind of difference between the two proposals.
Do you expect any additional cost at all for any other reason due to these signs outside of this, or is this all of it?
We will have to run a fiber down from the lodge, because we're going to store this equipment up at the lodge, but we have to run the fiber for security and for some other purposes anyway, and we've already laid the conduit in, so we'll have the cost of doing the fiber, but we're going to take that off our technology budget, because we have to run it down there for some other items anyway. It was just already planned. We're just going to utilize it since it's down there.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
On the warranty, I was reading that it has a five-year warranty.
Correct.
Is that pretty standard?
Yeah, so the two proposals that we got, in detail proposals, both had that, and when I was kind of looking through the industry standard, it seems to be pretty much industry standard, this five years. Most of these things are, systems are designed to last ten plus, but they, like a lot of things, only worry about half what they really expected to last.
Other questions or comments? I have one question, and that is, have you reviewed this with Cap Fed, and have they approved the same?
Yes, I'm sorry, I meant to address that. We did have a representative of Capitol Federal come down and do a demo with us with Next LED system, and they expressed no concerns, they seemed pleased with it, and were good with it.
Very good. Any other questions or motions with regard to the same?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just make a motion that we authorize the PBC, you, to sign the quote with Next LED for the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents?
I'll second.
We got a motion from Troy and a second from Mike to approve the proposition for the digital board's purchase as presented. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Public Building Commission meeting.
So moved.
Motion? Second?
Second.
We've got a motion second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is adjourned.
All right, we will reconvene the city council meeting here. I believe the next item up for business is an executive session. Did I skip one? Okay?
Yes.
So we want the governing body, the city attorney, the city administrator, and who else in this?
Just that and the first executive session.
For how long?
I thought it was a half hour.
Administrator and I discussed this, and subject to your approval, we think it really warrants thirty minutes.
That's a super bad deal. Before we go into executive session, I just want to let everybody know here that I am DVR in the KU game. If you tell me the score when I walk out of this executive session, you may not have a job tomorrow. Okay? So, somebody needs to make a motion to go into executive session and include the governing body, the city administrator, the city attorney, for approximately thirty minutes. That is for consultation with our attorney for privileged, I assume consultation with attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, subsection two.
So moved?
Second.
A motion by CR and a second by Greg to go into executive session. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Session, I got just a little bit confused there. We didn't quite conclude all of our matters under attorney-client privilege. Should we go back in there for five minutes for that?
Or do we?
Yeah, that would be fine for the same purpose originally stated in the original motion for not to exceed five minutes.
Five minutes is enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion by C.R., second by Troy, to go back into executive session for attorney-client privilege and include the governing body, city administrator, city attorney, for approximately five minutes. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion by CR, seconded by Troy to go into executive session, include the governing body, the city administrator, city attorney, and director of public works. For the purposes of discussing the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 75 4319 B6 for a period not to exceed 10 minutes to include the mayor, the city council, the city administrator, myself, and the director of public works.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion by CR, seconded by Troy to go into executive session, include the governing body, the city administrator, city attorney, and director of public works. For the purposes of discussing the acquisition of real property pursuant to KSA 75 4319 subsection six for approximately, is that 10 minutes? Further discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else?
Yes, appreciation party, January the 20th.
Yeah.
Few of you have RSVP'd, some of you have not. So, I think it's gonna be a whole lot of fun. I think every year it's been a lot of fun.
This year's gonna be really fun.
It's gonna be really fun this year, exactly.
Really, really fun.
Yeah, so, come have a hell and good time, but let me know that you're gonna come. That's it.
Anything else? Last chance.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by CR, seconded by Troy. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.